Here.
Maxman.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda, resolution proposals recommended. Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Public comments, anybody from the public like to comment about anything other than what's on the agenda for today?
I guess I'll go first. Other than that's on the agenda, is Country View on the agenda today?
Pardon me?
Country View is on the agenda today?
Yes, it is.
But do you just want me to say what I have to say then? Now, or do you want me to wait? What do you prefer?
Agenda item.
It's an agenda item, you can do it then.
Agenda item.
Alright.
Next.
I'm Ray Garris. Live out in Washburn. I just had a few questions about, in the past, when we had the water issues and all that. I've been keeping track of, our pump's been running pretty much. We have, you guys put, or the county put in a ground type of pump down on the end of 500 block of Third Street. And I noticed that's not running at the moment. And I was wondering, and I have concerns about, you know, our big system we put in out there for the handling, the sanitary sewer. And I took a drive through there yesterday and I looked at, maybe thirty houses might have sump pumps running out. I think, I mean, a lot of people, I don't want to, I have concerns that down the road it's gonna mess up our sewer system because a lot of people are, I think, are pumping the groundwater into that system that-
Ray, that's on the agenda today.
Oh, that's on the agenda?
In the superintendent for out there is here, and he's gonna address the pumps in the water out there.
Okay.
And you can have questions from him too if you need to at that time.
Alright, so, want me to wait?
Yep, please.
Okay.
Anyone else? Next is claims and payments, resolution for the pay the bills for the county.
The county's expenditures this week total 203,002.61.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on this item? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Mr. Maxman?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted, next is the resolution to pay the bills for Country View care facility.
Country View's expenditures to be paid this week total 58,813.22. Five eight, eight one three, point two two. We're still holding two months' worth of payments to the county of 631,913.43. This morning their bank balance was about 568,000.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on this item? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Maxman?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is receipt project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Morning.
Morning, Kim.
Good morning, Kim Veder, IT Director. October is National Cyber Security Awareness Month and hopefully, while, if Abby can get that up, yep, there we go. While you're checking out the reasons why passwords are like underwear, I've got some other tips about making your online activity safer. Number one, password should be at least eight characters with numbers and special symbols. And then you should try to come up with a format that will help you remember it, like a phrase. If that generates a longer password that's easier to remember, try replacing letters with numbers and include a special symbol. Number two, use multiple passwords for different accounts. You reduce the risk of one breach and exposing you everywhere that you have a login account using the same password. Number three, and this is probably one of the most important ones, think before you click. Ransomware and phishing attacks have increased dramatically in the last two years. Things to look for include misspellings in the email, a return address that doesn't match that of the sender. It's always best not to click on the emails, no matter how real they look. When in doubt, delete. If you're worried it's important, contact the sender in a separate email or phone. Number four, avoid public wifi. Never conduct business using wifi in public spaces. It can be exploited by the bad guys who can see what you're logging into without much effort and are able to capture your password. Please use these suggestions to help you make your online activities safer. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you, Kim.
Kathy?
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Kathy Niklas, County Engineer. Brief update on the road closures this morning due to the rain last night. Right now it's just three or four closures, pretty much around the county off-road, just south of Waterloo is closed. Probably be closed for the morning and then reopen once the water goes down. Donald Street, east of Dewar is closed again temporarily and then Gresham Road is also a closure. The public can see all of our road closures on the website, they can also sign up for notifications of road closures on the website as well. We are continuing as best as we can with paving on Elk Run Road. That should resume again tomorrow to do the top lift, and this is the portion of Elk Run Road between Donald Street and then Dunkerton Road. Meanwhile, Waverly Road is also awaiting the paving as well. Aspro would like to get out there probably in another week and a half, once Elk Run Road is done. And all this, of course, is weather permitting. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other department head, elected officials? Moving on to minutes approved for October 2nd.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Falling items are by resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on any of the items? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Maxman?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is contracts and agreements, this is a resolution to approve the amendment number four to contract DCAT 2-19-090 between Blackhawk County Department of Human Services and Blackhawk County D cap board for the purpose of providing transportation of delinquent youth for the first district counties in the amount not to exceed $60,000 from October 9th through June 30th, 2019. So moved.
I'll second that, but I do want to point a clarification. I did take a look at that contract, and the date of the contract starting was October 19th, not today's date. But the portion, I guess probably more importantly, it does state in the contract not to exceed $50,000 rather than the $60,000. So that was just something-
Original contract, this is an amendment.
Yeah.
Yes, but the contract amendment that's in here says the not the $50,000. I just wanted to point that out so we're clear. But I second it.
Okay. This is, any further discussion? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Mr. Maxman?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is resolution at the agreement between Blackhawk County and Pretoc Capital LLC for the convenience of the Country View care facility to be approved. So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Open for discussion.
Hi.
Hi.
Morning.
Good morning.
Nancy Jacobs, 225 Tonoff Drive, Elk Run Heights. I'd like to thank you for letting us speak. While there's many things that I believe that we should be considering, I narrowed my focus to just one. I recently read an article in the Waterloo Courier where Supervisor Leyland and White had explained that the primary reason that you wanted to sell Country View was because of the financial shortfalls, that it would cause an increase to the tax burden on taxpayers of Blackhawk County. With this in mind, it's my understanding that the RFP states that the minimum amount that you would accept would be 5.5 million. And that one company, Beacon, offered 5.5, and Pretoc had offered 5.6. However, recently, Pretoc had lowered their amount offered to 4 million. And that's what you're talking about today. If that understanding's correct, then I have to question the reason for selling Country View and the validity of what you've said to the taxpayers. So I have two questions. How can you even consider the bid that's that much lower, 1.5 to 1.6 million? That's the first question. The second question is how do you plan on explaining to the taxpayers of Blackhawk County that you decided that 1.5 to 1.6 million wouldn't even matter to them? Especially since you have a bid that's 5.5. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Morning.
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 Eric Johnson, representing you on this transaction. So let me just put a little clarification on what has taken place. An audit by the state came through, and those audit numbers indicated that Country View was being, their rates were overpaid, and they were decreasing the rates, and this happened at the state level. And on their PMI section, the rates were, I think, $301 per day, and they were being decreased to $235 per day, which was a significant decrease. Also, the NF rates were being decreased too, not as much, but they were being decreased. Based upon those numbers, the proposed purchaser that we are negotiating with believed that there was a loss of about 3.3 million in value. There is also a loss in the census of the number of people at Country View. We had some negotiation with them, and based upon that, the price was renegotiated at 4 million. Are you trying to get Mark Myers on?
He wondered, should it be probably-
Mark Myers.
Hi, this is Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors. We have the item on our agenda now. And Eric Johnson has given an overview, speaking to the board in reference to the adjustments in the bids from Pretoc.
So just to continue on, obviously, you know, my job is to put together the best deal I can for you. You know, my job is not to value the facility, okay? And so Susan and I had conversations with our brokers who were valuing that to get confirmation whether we should take this back out again. And Mark can talk on that, but the ultimate answer was, he did not believe taking that back out for bid would lead to a higher bid and likely would lead to a lower bid. And I believe they also reached out to the other two folks that showed interest but never officially submitted formal bids because Frythem and Beacon. And Beacon was interested but pulled their final bid before it got finalized. So I think Mark might be the one to talk about the valuation and how we got there.
Right, right, so the reasons for the price change by Pretoc, which we were not happy about either, I mean, actually, to clarify, we tried, we went back to the two bidders and was-
Excuse me, excuse me, Mark, could you give your name?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry, I apologize. This is Mark Myers, and I'm with Institutional Corporate Advisors, Division, Marcus Mochap, and we are the brokers representing the county in this transaction. And we ran a process, we ran a process and collected bids, we believe we had three bids. One for Pretoc, and we had two other bids, and they were, for one reason or another, not as, for one reason or another, not as beneficial for the county as the Pretoc bid. Either because the price was lower, or the contingencies were greater, or the probability of closing was lower. For example, we had a bid from a gentleman by the name of Bruce Woodtime, his company out of Florida. And they made it clear that they were in need of identifying a couple of other nursing facilities to acquire in Iowa before they would agree to purchase your county facility. And we didn't want to put the county in a position where, you know, you couldn't close your transaction because they hadn't closed other transactions, that would not be a good position to put you in. So that was one of the material differences between the bid from War Time's group and Pretoc. So, but we have to go back to Mr. Woodtime. He's no longer, he's not interested in pursuing this any longer. I think for various reasons, I don't think he's yet purchased some other facilities in Iowa, and I think for other reasons too. I think he's not interested any longer. And the other bidder had the same conclusion. So, I'll get to the pricing adjustment in a second and how Pretoc came up with that number. But I think it's, I think it's very probable that if we went back out to market, which we're certainly glad to do, we represent you, not the other way around. So if you direct us to go back out to market with a second, I will, you know, to re-bid, we'll be glad to do that. We're just afraid that if we do that and Pretoc is the only bidder, and they know that because, you know, publicly, kind of announce the results or something of that nature, which I believe some of the results, including number of bidders and so forth, would be announced typically. I think they were last time, and Pretoc, you know, didn't think they would, they thought they were the only bidder, you know, things might be worse for us, which right now they still submit their bidders in the wings, so we're not going to tell the others because, you know, we present Pretoc. So we would highly discourage you from going out to market again, just for your own sake, but we'll certainly do that if the county directs us. So getting to the valuation issue, so they called us the other day and they said that they were gonna have to adjust the price because the PMI, reimbursement reimbursement for the PMI residents had declined, and I may have my numbers off a little bit, but I think it was about $66 per patient day. And I think there are 21 of those residents. And again, I may have my numbers off, but whatever it was, it was a pretty significant dollar amount per year. I think it was around $336 or $337,000 of lost profits. And not just lost revenue because the costs are gonna stay the same to care for those residents, but the reimbursement's gone down by that amount. So nursing homes are typically valued at eight times the, they give a doc or the operating profit, if you will, operating margin, that operating income, a lot of different definitions, words for it, but essentially it's your operating revenue as much as operating expenses. So a decline of $337,000 times eight would be about $2.5 million of lost profits. In addition to the negative impact, the occupancy has declined about 12% over where we started when Pretoc signed in OI. And the Medicaid rate, we have not been able to say this yet, but we believe the Medicaid rate due to the casemix, which is the acuity level of residents, have declined from 194 per patient day to 191, and those are round numbers. So if you were to take the occupancy decline and the Medicaid decline, you would have a number of over a million dollars additional lost revenue. So Pretoc had to come up with some number, I believe they were gonna come up with a number much, much lower than 4 million, and we thought to have them, you know, come up with something that was more reasonable. So they came back with a fraction of the total lost revenue or lost profits that they, that they were concerned about. So the 4 million in a sense is the plug number, but it's a plug number in the sense that if we did this mathematically, they would be coming back at, you know, $2.5 or $3.5 instead of 4 million. So what would happen with the $4 million, we do think that the board should accept it or choose to go back out to market and see what else is out there. But we're just afraid that that might bring, you know, worse results with these lower reimbursement rates and lower occupancy.
Go ahead.
So, you know, as Mark indicated, we were obviously disappointed with the change in the price that was offered. Susan and I have had various conversations over the past week with Mark and his associates trying to get comfortable with that. And I think we're at that point where we think, or your value, this would be the best value we can get at this time. And taking it back to market would not yield a better result and likely would yield a lower result. And so that's where we're at.
Eric, is the price actually a million, 125?
The price is actually 4,150,000, because at the, Pretoc wanted their consultant, that they're paying 150,000, they wanted that to come out of the price. And so it was lowered to 4 million, and then 150 was added on that we're going to pay their consultant, which is really just a pass through. The result is it's a net 4 million for the county, so it's 4,150,000.
What about, can you address the question of whether there's any problems with taking this lower bid than what was laid out in the RFP?
Yeah, well, so I had some concerns about that too, and I believe the RFP that was sent out, ultimately, there was only one party that did respond to that, and that being Pretoc, that ultimately entered into a letter of intent since Frythem withdrew theirs. I had some conversations with Attorney Burke about that too, and I think our conclusion is that the RFP went out, we entered into non-binding agreement with Pretoc, and we've negotiated in good faith with them. There's been a change in circumstances that's, you know, still is part of the negotiations. It's certainly within your purview to vote against this, to rebid this, Mark's belief. And I think my belief too is that that would ultimately not be advantageous to the county. But I don't think you need to rebid it, I think that you still can negotiate with Pretoc based upon this. And I think Attorney Burke would confirm that.
Yes, I agree with that. Susan, when we looked at the budget for Country View, with doing upgrades to the facility, we were looking at a figure of about the county having to tax for about 3 million annually, at least based on today's dollars. Is that what you've calculated?
Yes, I haven't recalculated it, but we lost, our operating losses at Country View last year were around 1.3, 1.4 million. This year, the operating losses in the first two months are about 300,000. So we haven't, and that's not including any capital investments that would need to be made at the facility.
I know that that's also not including making any sort of reforms, including doing exactly what Pretoc's gonna do, which is add Medicare beds and diversify their income sources. And we all know that Medicare short-term disability pays at a much higher rate. And that's exactly part of their business plan, something that we could have explored ourselves.
Susan, does that include the change in lowered rates either?
Yes, so the current losses of about 150,000 a month are with the reduced rate and the reduced census where we're at right now. I believe that's Sheri and Carol here, is that correct, Sheri?
Yep.
Other questions for me?
No, not right now. Anyone else from Country View want to speak, or? No, let somebody else speak.
Morning, Board, Melissa Lee, Country View.
Address.
149 Angler Lane, Waterloo, Iowa.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm here today just because of my residence. So they can read the paper, they can watch TV, some of them can, and they interpret everything differently because of their mental illness. And last weekend, a family member came to pick up their loved one for an outing. The family member was worried and crying, stating that her loved one had called her after finding out the news about the layoffs to the Country View employees. They talked for about 30 minutes each phone call. And he was worried, saying, "Who's gonna take care of me when they lay everybody off? Who's gonna take care of me? She's upset, what am I gonna do?" So then here we are again, picking up the pieces, because just like last time, when their home was for sale, they learned about that on the news too. They learned about that on the news, they learned about the layoffs in the newspaper and on the news. It's always the media telling our residents, you know, what's going on out there at Country View. You know, they deserve better than that. And we deserve better than that. You should have, I'm thinking that you should have told our administration, hey, this is what's going on. You know, talk to your employees, talk to the residents. They shouldn't have to find out that way. And that just breaks my heart that they always have to find out through the media what's going on out there. They deserve better. And you know, it doesn't matter how many boards you sit on, how many boards you serve, doesn't matter how much you volunteer. God don't like ugly, and this whole thing has been ugly from start till now. And you know, when you go by that food bank, Craig, please try to look the other way. Because some of those people that you're gonna lay off might be in that food bank line that you created. Happy holidays. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Deb Vivian, you all know me.
Address.
Huh?
Address.
Oh, I live in Jessup, Iowa. I worked at Country View. And I might have two concerns. One, in the agreement, Linda had said in the paper that with the zoning, that you forgot to add it in or whatever, and that they could build, made it residential, where they could build condos, apartments, or houses or whatever out there. My concern is if Pretoc buys this, what are they gonna do with the residents, you know, if that's their future? Because, you know, they do have assisted living complexes too. Are they gonna tear down Country View? Our residents will not fit in that atmosphere. They just won't fit in that. So what is gonna happen to our residents of Blackhawk County that live out there now?
Deb? If they do that- I will comment here, because Pretoc has said their desire, their interest is to take care of those individuals. They will remain at Country View, is what they have told all of us. I, there are no plans to change that, that we're aware of. And I think additional assisted living would be probably a plus for this community, not putting those people out of where they're-
not putting those people out of where their homes have been, but adding some of those features. So if you're...
Well, adding it, but yeah.
Yes, yes.
That was my question, what was, you know, what's going to happen to the other residents if they do just do that, you know?
And that they need to be cared for. And that's, I think, was probably our primary concern in this. While it is for employees as well, the primary concern of this has been those residents and making sure they're cared for and that they have a home. And I think, and only my perspective, but I said previously, and I'll say it again too, those folks that have thought that was their home for years, some of those people.
Fifty-three years, some of them.
Yes. So closing that facility is a, talk about an ugly option, that's a terrible option. It puts people out of jobs, it puts...
It'd be horrific.
Those residents, it was.
The wholesale has been just terrible for the residents.
And so this is such a much better alternative. We are talking with people in the long-term health, in the long-term healthcare that want to take care of these people. So that is important to us. It sounds like it's important to you, I'm sure, to most of the people here in this room. So it is not to displace those people. And I am sorry for the employees, and I am sorry for the residents, having to go through all this time that it's taking for this process. I'm sorry, but to do it transparently, to take our time and do our due diligence, have the company do their due diligence, it's taking longer than we'd like. But why rush through something like this too, except for the benefit of unfortunately residents that are at a disadvantage of understanding this whole thing? Heck, this is different, or hard to understand for all of us, so we have to take time as well. That's why we needed attorneys, that's why we have consultants and brokers to help us work through this process. And I am, like I say, sorry for everyone that it's taking this long, but it is. So if you have questions or concerns, we've always said, call us, contact us. When you learned of this information, I'm sorry, you learned about it, I think, the same time we learned about it, just about...
Learned about it in the paper?
No, this information on the cost change and all of that type of thing. No, and sometimes I, sometimes more is read into the Courier or the newspaper or any media. If you watch the minutes or the meetings, the proceedings, I know that's probably the best way to get the information from what we've said or what we think. But call anytime. I think all of us are open to discussing some of this with you, as much as we know about it. We're working through the process too. And talking about layoffs, my comments on that was really in regard to the fact that anytime you're working with a new company, you will lay off people from the present and you will be rehired. And obviously, I can't speak to who will be hired, and so I didn't say that all the employees will be rehired. And I don't know how that will work, but that is what their desire is also, to employ the people that are taking care of those residents, who know those residents well, who have been loyal, good employees, and cared about those people, as you mentioned. And they want to continue those relationships. They said that to us in the tours, that that's what they wanted to do and how important staff is. But we haven't had those conversations yet, because we haven't voted to purchase or sell yet. That was my explanation last week, was to say, we don't have those discussions until we take this vote and maybe go that direction. And then we've got that time till closing or future dates to talk with employees, to talk with Preetalk, to talk with our attorneys and find out what some of that is, you know, some of those things, and how we'll work through them. It's not like we've done this before, so we need to know all of our rights and what we need to do and responsibilities. That's all. It's not to avoid talking to anyone or not giving you information. It's still us learning the process, working through it. So please don't misunderstand that we're trying to displace anyone and that Preetalk's ever given us any indication to do that. It's to keep these folks in place, and I think we put a ten-year stipulation on it. I believe I saw that in the agreement. As I reread it the last couple of days, that's in there, that's still their desire to keep those people there for ten years minimum, and they stated, and hope, and longer was their intention, but that they were going to abide by our term of ten years. So I hate to see them criticized for not wanting to take care of these people. That's the industry they're in, that's why they buy it. But we certainly are out for the betterment of...
Well, we're not, I'm not here to criticize, I'm just here, you know, on behalf, I'm just worried about the residents and, and my coworkers.
Yeah, no, and we are too. And we want the best for the U.S. coworkers and our staff. We're not wanting to see people laid off, but we can't say who will be hired or how they'll go through the process. We don't know that.
I mean, if they lay off, how are they going to, I mean, how would that work? You're going to lay people off? Well, in the process, if you're laying them off, who's going to take care of the residents? Are they going to, you're going to lay them off and...
You have to lay you off first before they can hire you.
Well, I know that, but I'm saying, who's going to take care of the residents during that time?
Well, I don't understand that process as well as I'd like to, but it will be almost like a, I'm thinking, if one stops, one starts, the next minute starts. It's not like people won't be, they'll have to be called off.
Midnight on that, on whatever date is decided, you'll be laid off, and at twelve oh one, you'll be hired by the new firm. Or twelve point, whatever.
It's to have a seamless transition. Everybody wants it smooth for the residents, but for staff too.
Well, what's going to happen to the staff that want to accept the offer? I mean, I guess that's a question that a lot of people want to know too. What if they want to accept the offer?
Well, that is their decision.
Their decision.
I mean...
Why wouldn't they accept the offer, you think?
Why wouldn't they accept the offer? I can't speak for everybody. I don't know why. I can't tell you the reasons why. You know, maybe the change in benefits, maybe, you know, maybe the pay, you know, I don't know. I can't speak for everybody, but I'm sure everybody has their own reasons.
And we can't speak for Preetalk either, but...
No, I'm not asking this.
Things we've seen from Preetalk seem like you'll have about the same things in place, in all honesty, for the employees they decide to keep. And I suspect, my thoughts are, in all honesty, they'll keep ninety-nine point nine percent of you, because they're going to need you to operate the business. And they want to, they want to be a good neighbor too.
All right, and then I have another thing that somebody had asked me. I don't pay Black Hawk County taxes, so this isn't for me. The raise in Black Hawk County taxes, what's going to happen to that, they sell Country View, is it still going to be raised or, or what's going to happen with the taxes that are being raised for Country View?
In our last budget cycle, we did vote to raise taxes on the taxpayers, and that will be assessed against their property this year in the budget process. Coming up in January, the board will have to decide how they're going to address that and what the rate, tax rate will be if we do not own that facility.
Okay, because there's a lot of questions out there. I mean, those are, you know, two of the main ones I wanted to address, but you know, there's a million questions, and some people are scared to come up and talk. They're not going to ask you the questions because they're scared, or some people might get upset. And so they don't feel comfortable coming up and talking, but there's, I mean, employees out there, they have all kinds of questions. I mean, I just, I don't know. Doesn't it just seem like maybe you guys should have a meeting with the employees or something and try to explain it to them? I mean, the best that you can?
Like Linda said, we're still reading through it.
I know, but I mean...
I read through, I got through it last night.
But I meant the fact that they had to read it in the newspaper, you know, that just brought up a lot of, it made a lot of people retire, made a lot of people quit, you know, because they're scared. People have to survive.
Newspaper makes me upset a lot, a lot of times.
What?
I said newspaper makes a lot of people upset a lot of times.
Well, our employees were upset. We've had a resident out there that wouldn't even take a bath for over a week. We couldn't get him to take a bath because he's so upset about it.
I thought they had to.
Yeah, you have to, but they also have their rights, and you can't, you can't just take somebody and force them and throw them in the shower. You just can't do that. I mean, they're human beings. You just can't do that to them.
Well, that's why we need the staff to have, because you work through those issues, you know those people better than any of us, and, and that's why staff is important.
I mean, we have people that, you know, they had to have so many room changes and stuff. Our residents are so upset, they're just really upset.
Well, and I, like I said, sympathize with you as employees, but the residents, I realize there's no way we can explain to them like you can and talk to them like you can and comfort them. So that's why employees are so important in this transition, and we want it to be positive for everyone, but this kind of intervention, we don't know yet.
We still have a forty-five day timeframe in here before this is finalized and the, if it goes forward on Preetalk, final day would be, I believe, December thirty-first is when the transition would take place. I guess before that, we would certainly encourage Preetalk to meet with, with the employees and to discuss what their plans are when hiring employees in the future.
I think that's in there, isn't it? If I read it correct, they'll be meeting with, making appointments and meeting with the staff and then meeting with the employees in, in group sessions and explaining to what's going on. And then even visiting the facility on a given day that everyone is aware of, so they can see what's going on, and then speak to the employees and get a better idea of what, you know, what they, what they need and what they're looking for, for employees.
They mentioned to us, Deb, at the tours, that, that the timing was not, was not good for any of us, that they wanted to get with staff, that they needed to meet with people. They needed to assure people what was going on and what was their process and get to know them. It's just unfortunate the timing this takes to work through all of this. This has taken longer, I think, through this part of due diligence even than we thought it was going to. So, but like I said, you can't hurry the process. But one of the things I thought of even asking Eric today was, you know, the timelines or timetables or who can get back to us with that, so that we know what to tell people and what to talk about, because we don't know. We've had vendors that have questions, residents, staff, families, like you said. And I know all the details put people more at rest, but it's something we're having to work through too, that we don't have those details to share, so.
Okay, so basically, there is no employee package yet, period?
If they have one, they've not shared any of that with us yet, so we don't know. As far as us knowing that too, and talking about things...
That's probably something that'll be shared with when you guys have your meetings with them.
There's a lot of the employees, you know, a lot of them have all kinds of sick time, lose vacation and all that, and you know, they're worried about all that stuff too.
Mark, could you address the timeline? Have you had discussions with Preetalk and how they would be addressing staff at Country View?
Yeah, yes, I, I can address that for the best I know. So as far as the timeline goes, unfortunately, I had a very strong and somewhat upsetting call with Preetalk. It was a setup because I, I told them, look, if you're, we represent the seller, and if you're asking the seller to take a material price reduction, typically what a buyer does is removes a good amount of their due diligence and amends the timeframe you've been at this for, I think, since the LOI of almost eighty days. And you should have some things done by now, you should need your entire due diligence period, but they stood their ground on that, and I was, I was pretty disappointed with them, and I would have known that. So unfortunately, their timeline remains as it stayed in the LOI, so they still want their forty-five days diligence following the execution of the purchase agreement, I believe that's what it states in the LOI, the letter of intent. So the timeline is still not condensed despite, you know, this, this move on the price, which again, I was not happy about. But at this point, we don't have another buyer to move to, so I wasn't able to recommend for the county that we, for that reason, for them not being, willing to be stronger in the diligence period or reduce the diligence period to move to another buyer. So that's what we have at this point. As far as employees, the most difficult thing to find in a care facility of any kind, be it mentally impaired or from geriatric residents, the most difficult thing to find is good people. And it's a, it's a national epidemic or pandemic, or whatever you want to call it, it's very, very difficult to find staff despite people saying they need jobs. I have some personal experience with nursing homes across the country, and I know that we've just had really challenges from myself and the partners and the clients and different people finding staff and nursing homes. So, you know, they're going to come with a lot of people from Chicago and change out the staff. They're going to, from a legal perspective, as someone mentioned a few minutes ago, from a legal perspective, they'll terminate our employees one minute and they'll rehire them the next, and so they'll become new employees, the new operators, and there's a clean bake on the books as far as whose employees they were in for the closing and who they are after the closing. That's typically how it's done. But as far as, you know, adding staff or reducing staff, they do have to profit, they have to make the facility profitable, otherwise they'll be in the same situation the county is, where they're not, you know, not making enough money to, to go forward long-term. The first thing an operator will try to do is improve revenue rather than cut, cut costs just because from perspective of long-term profits. You know, if you increase revenue, less leverage, you cut costs, you kind of like I had once, as Jeff Walsh used to say, so there may be some cost cutting, but I think if possible, they'd like to improve, enhance and improve revenue. If you think someone said adding, says they're moving or adding, every care or expanding it, or somebody's having programs which require more staffing, but there may be some staff that are addressed that are not, if, if there's a staff that are not, you know, being efficient or if there's one that's overstuffed, I'm sure they'll take a look at that, and that's up to the buyers that they have to look at on a case-by-case basis.
Mark, I don't know if this is a question for you then. It somewhat relates to the timeline we're talking about, I guess, though, as far as meeting with vendors and staff and residents and that type of thing, and what that timeline is, I guess, between now and December. I assume that would occur.
Yes, I'm sure Preetalk will be glad to meet with the, the staff and the vendors to assure them that they're, they're, they're working towards a smooth transition, and we can cover that with them at the, at the time the county directs us to move forward and to make those arrangements. We'll make sure that Preetalk, you know, make, makes those face-to-face meetings.
Okay. Well, I think it is just understanding those timelines sometimes so that we can relay that information to staff, because everybody wants, you know, we kind of say, well, we haven't heard anything or we don't know anything. That becomes a difficult answer for everybody.
Right, I think for Tuesday before, we need to get some direct, you know, direct answers from Preetalk in terms of those, those items, so we'll be glad to bring those forth to them.
Thank you.
And then obviously bring the best information.
And the forty-five days is, ends November twenty-sixth, right? If I remember right, reading the agreement?
Yeah.
So November twenty-sixth, and, and is that when, they'd be visiting the employees and stuff from now until the twenty-sixth, right?
Craig, I did ask Dan that question about when they will start meeting with employees. And so the timeline, and then we have it specifically put into the contract, is the forty-five days of due diligence will end on the, on November twenty-sixth. And then per the, the LOI, then there will be thirty days, and then the end of the month following the thirty days after the end of due diligence is the closing date. So we have the closing date on or before December thirty-first put into the contract. And Dan's response to the meeting with employees, and typically I think it's because they, when they are purchasing facilities that are, that are privately owned, the announcement is not made until a lot of this due diligence is done. But for us, we have had to go through it in a public way for transparency. But they meet with the employees beginning after that end of due diligence. And so unfortunately, might not happen until after November twenty-sixth, when they have completed their due diligence, and then they will start holding those meetings. I don't know if we could talk to them about, you know, a different timeline or, or different arrangements maybe coming in prior to that, but that was the response that I got from Dan.
I have a question, Susan. So do you mean, when you're saying meeting with employees, meeting individually and talking about positions and jobs, or do you mean just updating them on like what, what the plan is?
That I don't know. I asked him about the meetings where they would talk about their benefit plans and, you know, and that type of thing. And he, I know when we toured one of the homes, the chief operating officer, Morty, said, I think they went in and talked in a group about some of those details. I think when they start looking at the employees and the, you know, I don't, I don't know whether they will individually meet with each one for their hiring process, I don't... I don't know those details.
Okay. Well, that's what I was thinking. Morty was the one I think that spoke with us and said, you know, they recognized telling people what's going on, what their plans are for the facility, for the staffing, for that type of thing was important and we all agreed, I guess, but those would be important to have.
Well, I have another question, I have actually two. It's been said that, you know, they may contract out like the housekeeping, kitchen, laundry. Is there truth to that?
I guess I have, I have no answer for you on that. That would be the company's decision. I think that when we visited some of the other facilities, they still had in-house, that they did the in-house, some of the laundry and, and food services, et cetera. But I can't, I can't speak to what the company plans to do.
Well, it's just been said and it's been said more and more, a lot lately.
I'm sure people think that. I mean, in all fairness, there was a time as we've looked at options for Country View, we considered, should we be looking at outsourcing some of this portion of it?
Well, people are worried about it because it's cheaper. Everybody knows that. Well, they don't have to pay benefits and that, everybody knows that. So it is a, it is a worry.
Yeah. Well, that's why it would be good, like I say, for them to come in and talk.
And explain all this.
They, they do business with Martin Brothers, which we do business with out there, and they, they do it so they'd have the same prices and be able to keep, hold the prices down is what we were told when we visited a facility and what town did we go to for Frank?
It was outside Minneapolis.
Yeah, outside Minneapolis.
So that we, we don't know what, you know, their benefits packages will look like, at the, what exactly they'll look like, but we know, we have a general idea because we have seen their samples. I just want, you made clear that it's not at all comparable between our healthcare package and, and their healthcare packages that they offer. They had very high deductibles, very high premiums every month. And so I want to be clear that it's not at all comparable and that's the bulk of where they're planning on getting their savings is that they're going to be having healthcare that's, that's nowhere near comparable to ours.
Staff is going to take a hit on the healthcare.
They won't have IFRS, I mean, a 401K is never comparable to a pension. And, and then there'll be increasing, increasing revenue. And so that's, that's their basic business plan is that benefits will be lower and that's where the savings are coming from and they'll increase revenue by adding the assisted care units.
Well, that may be some, Chris. I guess I, until I see it, I guess we need to see what those.
I don't, yeah, I don't think we should be speaking about that.
They have to compete in this market, so obviously they need to be competitive or our staff will go to other places because healthcare is probably one of the most sought after positions right now and needed in many facilities. So like I said, there may be some savings in that too, but they talked about different staffing patterns and different things to consider. So until we actually see that and the staff will have that opportunity to review it and evaluate it and if they want to go to work at other places or think it's better somewhere else, obviously they'll have that option, but we hope it works well for them and as well as Pritoc.
If we want to wait until we actually see what the final thing is, then how can we vote on signing a purchase agreement and expect that we have any leverage of negotiating something better for these folks?
For, for the staff?
Right. Like, I don't, I don't understand what, what leverage we have left after, after today as far as negotiating anything in terms of.
We still have leverage.
Well, we still have those items that we didn't in the letter of intent.
Yep, we still have leverage. Read the whole thing.
So it's, you know, as a board or as myself, I can't predict or know what their package is going to be for benefits.
The people we talked to.
In the places we visited, they seem to feel that they were being treated fairly and that they liked being employed by Pritoc. It was a, it wasn't Pritoc that were employing them, it was another company from Pritoc. But I, you know, I guess, you know, the plan to provide different services, the county then would be competing with the private sector as we do today. We're not really competing with the private sector because private sector here locally does not provide those services. But if we go to looking at providing rehab, those type of things, I think those are provided by other care facilities in the area.
Anyone else got any questions? Give someone else.
Can I just ask one more question?
No, you've had enough time.
Oh, okay, well.
Please. Give some, give some other people.
That's fine. Employees do want to know who gave them, how do they know the information about the employees to have an interview?
Say that again.
The employees would like to know how, what information was given to Pritoc because at one time they said that they had sent all the information to Pritoc on each employee. Well, the employee has not seen that evaluation or seen nothing, so they're, they're wondering who is giving this information that, you know, is Pritoc going to choose to hire them or not based on what they were told?
I'm not sure.
As part of, as part of the due diligence, they are requesting records. We have only given them information that is public information, so they do have the number of employees and the physicians out there and the salaries because that is public information. So that's all they have at this moment. Once we, if the board decides to enter into an agreement, I'm not sure what other type of due diligence information they will need. And we'll be looking at that and, and of course, going through our HR department to make sure that whatever we provide to them, you know, is, is acceptable, you know, information to, to give them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Jerry Hagman, 3052 San Salvador Drive. Thanks again for everything you do. I know it's not easy to make these decisions. The state government, two years ago, dumbed down the Medicaid reimbursement rates. It's affecting a lot, as you know, a lot of, and you've mentioned it, a lot of healthcare facilities. I represent, or I'm a member of CWA 7108 and we've recently inherited the nurses out there. I think it's 12 of them, maybe. So, union represented employees do work. There's a nursing home in Cedar Falls that we represent also. So I think the, it, it is tough to deal with the reimbursement rate, but I would like, I would hope that Pritoc does think of the long-term dedicated employees and the residents out there when they deal with wages, benefits and longevity of the employees. There's a lot of dedication there, so thank you and if any help we can be, we'll help out.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you.
Shirley Me Patch, N 106, Fishtown Lane, that's in Iowa. I just want to clarify something is I think Tim Jamerson does a wonderful job, but he writes in the paper. And I know I tell everybody, I says that guy has got a memory of what's going on, he doesn't write down much, but, and you know, there's only one way you want people to print the news or say the news. It's, it's what happened. He does print in the news what happens. Maybe it doesn't come out to read like you want it to read, but it tells you the way, the way it is, is the way I look at it. So thank you, Tim, very much. And I, I'm, you know, I've been upset for a lot of, over a year, I'm on the board of just, or whatever out there, I'm on the board out there and I have been since it started. So, and, and I think we're very lucky that, that you've got it for the, and I know we're, we think of the residents and we think of the staff. At least we're going to, we're going to know that those residents, that some of them have been out there 40, 50 years, are still going to have a home for the next 10 years there. And who knows what'll happen? You know, that, that might keep them longer and we got to remember that most places in this company too hasn't handled like the PMI unit like that we have and I think, and then on Station One, they, they've never put up with the mental health like, like they're going to out there. So they're going to want to keep these, the staff because they're not going to kind, find that kind of staff from any other place coming out there to work because they've never worked with it. But the people out there are experienced, they do a good job and, and I hope that they hire everybody that they can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dwayne Ayers, 1205 Bishop Street, Waterloo. My family's been associated with the county home since it was the old wooden home, but I'm not here for that. And I thank you guys because you're doing a real hard job, a real hard job. But most people don't understand, if you're going to run this as a business, there's going to have to be major cuts. And as the gentleman said on the phone, we're looking out for the long-term profit. Any business has to have a profit. So in other words, in order to do that, employees are all going to get some cut in wages, one where, and probably 50% cut in benefits if they stay on. And this is what they got to realize. The county home, the county's been run by the county excellent for years. Things have got to change. They got to change for the people that are there and the employees are going to be the ones that are going to take the big change. And I run a small business, I know what it is, you have to make a little profit. This company has to make a profit, otherwise they wouldn't even be interested. Some employees are, like you said, I think they're only going to hire about 70% of the people back and that's just my opinion, and they're going to be hired back at probably 70% of their wages and benefits. And that's just my opinion, but you've got to be able to run it as a profit as the gentleman on the phone said, and the lady here said that if you need to, go find another job someplace if you want to. But that's what the employees are going to have to realize. My family has worked out there since the old wooden county home on Hall Street connected to me. So I thank you guys, but the people have to realize there are going to be major cuts. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I'd just like to comment on that. In, in the facilities that we visited, they were paying the prevailing wage in the area. So I, I think that to assume that they're going to reduce wages, I don't think is an accurate forecast.
Anyone else from Country View like to speak?
Can I be, I'm going to ask a few questions.
Any new, anybody new? Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, you said that even though, okay, so am I correct in understanding that this is supposed to reduce our tax burden on the taxpayers of Black Hawk County? Was I correct with that?
It'd be the decision of the board as they act on the budget in January, where they set the tax levy.
Okay, okay. So selling this really probably isn't going to have any effect on that at all?
Well, it'll have a big effect on where your taxes are. But it won't keep your taxes at a level because we had automatically, got increases before we even opened up the budget every year. So that'll certainly help, but you're still going to have other things that go up. So you're never going to have zero unless you cut people, services.
Oh, I don't expect there to be zero tax burden, but trust me.
No.
But I was wanting, I was, I was under the assumption or understanding, excuse me, that, that the sale of this was going to put a little alleviation to the rise of our.
It would help, let's put it that way.
It certainly has the potential to do that, but again, there'll be, there'll be some new board members coming in here to do next year's budget for 2020. I don't know what the makeup the board will be. Only thing I can tell you for certain is I will not be here.
Right, I understand.
Which, you know, as we go through this, perhaps I should have reconsidered and stayed on.
There's a lot of considerations anyway, budget. It's revenues.
Right, I understand that.
If they're up, that helps you on the other end. If they're down, that hurts you on the other end. So there's a lot of factors other than Country View that goes into that budget.
But there's certainly an opportunity for the board as they look through the 2020 budget to control the amount of tax that they levy.
We had a lot of conversations during budget last budget on what to tax for, for Country View, knowing that we needed to, like I say, have funding there available. We certainly didn't want to not fund for it regardless of what happened here. So yes, there, and, and looking at the numbers even that Pritoc and others have provided us on these rate increases, that just means we would have to tax more to make up these differences as we're looking at their, you know, proposal now. You know, that's something we'd have to address as well.
It is.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from Country View?
I guess I'd, you know, be 12 years on the board and I think that we have had individuals, staff from Country View, management staff, that have done an outstanding job to provide the quality care to the residents of Country View. And it'd be my hope that they continue to work at Country View and provide that high quality of care to the residents at Country View because there's certainly a need and the individuals that we serve, there are, or a number of them that have mental health issues. And, you know, as we look forward, the state of Iowa has not been receptive to addressing this issue, so we all have an opportunity to voice our opinions in November as we Employees of Country View staff, management staff, thank you for all you've done over these 12 years.
Thank you for acknowledging us, our dedication and our work.
Anyone else? I'd like to expound on what Frank just said too. I'd like to, over the past 12, more than 12 years, I've, well, I was in office before and I've been going to Country View for a long time and I appreciate the employees. I appreciate the people that are out there. And that's why we made these trips like we did to see what the other facilities were doing, ask a lot of questions, but there was still a lot of questions to be answered. And that's what this due diligence process and everything's all about. Hopefully, all the, I'd say, in my own opinion, more than 70% of the employees will be kept. I'd, I'd say right, right off the bat, I'd think they'd say, keep them all for at least a period of time to work, to work through the process and hard telling how long the process is going to take for them. Mr. Nagle, you have something you want to say?
I, I do, and I'm here at the invitation of one of you probably because I had some experience with this when I served in the Congress. The city of Marshalltown decided they wanted to improve their meatpacking plant. Meatpacker wanted to improve it. City put in $3 million under an assurance that all the existing workforce would be retained. Three weeks after the plant was opened and promised jobs were available, everybody at the plant was fired. They were told they could reapply. Once you sign this contract, you lose your leverage. I don't care what they're saying, no, no, no. I don't care what they're saying, you lose your leverage. And the effect of this, before I say that, I want to say one other thing. I come before this board with great respect for you. I applaud your foresight in dealing with the problems the rest of the nation hasn't with their roads and bristles. Our sheriff's department is excellent, our auditor is above question, our county attorney is vigorous, our recorder is effective and our treasurer is honest. And all that reflects on the board and what you've accomplished. But on this path, I must, because of my experience, respectfully disagree with where you're going. I think the care of those people and the quality of life of the people that work for us, the county, are more important than saving a few tax dollars for the wealthiest on their property taxes. And so I would simply urge you, I don't want to belabor the point, I can count, I don't want to belabor the point, but I would urge you to, one, don't take this step, you'll regret it. Two, if you do, before you sign that agreement, you get your leverage and your guarantees for your employees and your guarantees of the, for the, providing for the, for the residents out there because if you don't, you can ask, but you cannot dictate and you cannot negotiate. And I thank you, I don't want to be long, I thank you for your efforts and your study and diligence on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Nagle.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else?
There are motion on table.
Yes. Oh, there, okay. I have a motion and a second on the table. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Mr. Maxman?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
No.
Mr. White?
Yes. Resolution adopted. And we will follow through with the thoughts of Mr. Nagel and everyone else. Moving on to other businesses, a motion at the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Kim Veder, IT Director. Be approved and Director Chairs assigned for same. Purchase the server for $7,485.36 from Proactive Solutions to replace the used server for GIS AutoCAD software.
So moved.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution at the abatement of property taxes for September 2018, March 19 installments for parcel 881220376019 and parcel 881220376018. Owners Washburn Community Association in the amount of $448. So moved. Moved in second. Any discussion?
Rita, the one parcels came from the school, which there was no taxes on it. The other parcel is a piece that they're paying for right now under contract. Do you know for sure if them's taxes from the time they took it? Or they got any tax money prior to the time of them taking it?
They have been paying taxes since they took ownership in '15.
So they're all their taxes? There was nothing left on there by Rory Delegardel?
Uh, they were buying it on contract.
Yes, they are.
So I, bill would have gone to them. I did not check to see if they paid them if it was Delegardel or if it was the association. But bill would have gone to Washburn Community Association and they had purchased it or received it back in '15.
'15. I just want to make sure the taxes are on their half, not on Rory's because they be owing them.
Any further discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Maxman?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Resolution to retroactively waive the first reading of the October 2nd, 2018 hearing at 9:07, reset send ordinance 17, the shotgun ordinance and ordinance number 129, shotguns number 3-4-2, as notice was published on September 24, 2018 in Waterloo Courier. Moved in seconded. Any discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Maxman?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is discussion, possible board action to approve the request for purchase of capital equipment of refurbished pumps for the Washburn sanitary sewer system and is recommended by Ben Delegardel, Urban Services. Morning, Ben.
Good morning. I'm here early this month because we have a shortage of pumps resulting from heavy rain. And I think everyone in Iowa is experiencing that currently. I would request that you purchase 10 pumps to keep up our inventory. We have five good pumps right now. We have seven good pumps that have been replaced. Six of those were in the last five days. So starting Wednesday, I changed two. Thursday, I changed two. Last night, I changed two. And this morning, I got a call for two more lights that I need to go change. And that's a possibility of three of those five good pumps disappearing. So it leaves us with two.
Why don't you talk a little bit, Ben, about what you suspect is blowing on?
Yeah. So first of all, we'll get to the problem and the reason that we need these pumps is because I suspect sump pumps are going into the system. And the reason that sump pumps are bad for this system is that the style of pump needs lubrication from wash suds, toilet suds, shower, anything that would go down your drain needs to lubricate. A rubber boot that goes around, I brought some parts for you to review. Keep them in the bag because they're not sanitized. But there's a, there's a, there's a brand new one here. You can tell which one that is. And so after, over time, you'll get sump pump water coming in, coming in, coming in. The pump will continuously run. There's a rubber boot that goes over this and it's a little bit bigger than a coffee mug, but that rubber burns itself onto this metal rotor. And then the efficiency of the pump is lower to the point where the pump is not capable of creating enough pressure to push water through a check valve. So our force main maintains between 28 to 35 PSI pressure, water pressure, to push the water to the lagoon. While these pumps run about five, five or 10 PSI, more than that, running normally under a good condition. So when we see a reduction of pressure from the pump, it does not have enough pressure to get into the system. So if you don't mind passing this...
Why don't you let Ray examine and make sure they're real?
We'll just go ahead and pass that around. Those are real parts we just pulled.
Have you physically gone in any houses?
I was in one Wednesday or Thursday, I don't remember which day. And this person had their sump pump, flow drain goat went into the sump pump pit. The sump pump pit was hooked up to a line that had valves that we can switch it back and forth because there's a shower drain down there. And I'm understanding of that, that if you have a shower in your basement, you need some type of a pump system to get it lifted up. But most of the sewer lines in Washburn are 40 to 48 inches off the ground just because of how the town was set up with the septic tanks. A lot of those people still use that line to, they've just gone around the house and hooked it up to this pump system. The problem with changing so many pumps is it gets costly. I've been out there six times, well, six pumps in the last five days. So usually we see four to five, six service calls, maybe seven. So I do request the purchase of 10 to keep our inventory up. There are seven bad pumps that we can replace these parts on. They're rather, rather cheap. It's not a full rebuild cost, but you're paying me to go out and fix it and you're paying the shop fee to fix the pump when it gets back to our shop, so.
When was the last time we did the educational flyer out there?
Um, I don't remember exactly on the educational flyer. There's a few points I'd like to hit on this. So with the problem being that the sump pumps are going into the sewer, it is the board's and my direct responsibility to make sure that there's no sump pump water going into the system. The lagoon was designed to handle the household wastewater, but not rainwater from downspouts, drains, sump pump water. That raises our daily flow rate, which I monitor from 45,000 gallons per day is a normal dry day. And we've had between 130 and 170,000 gallons going through. So tripled, if not quadrupled, our water intake, which is a sure sign that when it rains, our, our flows go up. We know that there's sump pumps going into this system. You were talking about a flyer. The last thing I can remember that happened was an inspection between eight and 10 years ago. I don't have exact dates on this.
Yeah, but there's some houses you walk out and they turn the valve and they're back on again.
Right, right. So the, the valve system I was talking about is an illegal connection. And any city government would say that's an illegal connection to the sewer. It's the cities, you know, City Waterloo is responsible for making sure. I'm not sure if you know the politics of Waterloo, but they're going through some very bad, influent situations with, with their system in the last few years. And this system's very different because of the pressure system. The only drain lines that are gravity drain lines are from the house to the pumps that are in front of the houses. So it's really, the only way it can get in is from the house or the service line that comes out. So I would say 99% of it's coming from inside the household from a sump pump.
The key is what I've always said out there to the people when they call, and they have this week. If you're not doing it and your neighbor is, he's costing you money because it's your own pumps that you're burning up and replacement comes from the residents of Washburn.
Right. So because of this issue, this problem, we have issues with health, well-being, and personal property of others. It's our duty to protect that and not have sewer backing up into other, other people's houses. So maximum of four houses can be hooked to one of these stations. If we have an issue, we know it's one of four addresses, between two and four, two, three, or four. There's very few that have one or three, but you, they could be affecting other people in the system. One thing that goes along with that, I'd like to remind the public in Washburn that if there's a light on, I'd like them to call immediately. I get some calls that say, oh, it's usually a Sunday night at 8:30 PM as it's getting dark, that the light's been on all weekend and we need to have this changed. So it's really important to call right away. Sometimes we have...
Where's your number located that they can have access?
There's a sticker on every pump station. If they get mildew on them, I try to replace the stickers. I have them in the trailer. But the phone number to call is 319-240-3967. Tim and I, or Tom, Tom Little and I have discussed a flyer maybe going out with water bill. Not sure how to contact everyone in town. Not sure if Waterloo does any e-billing, anything like that. But I was going to try and get a contact list for the city of Washburn. That way, if I need to contact someone in one of these four houses. I do knock on doors to say, we, we have sump pumps going in here. We need to reduce that. But I don't have any authority to go in and inspect it this time. So I'm also requesting your immediate start of inspections in town and someone that I can call if I do have a suspected culprit in this, in an area where I'm fixing a pump. Because to really protect the people who are doing it right, we need to, we need to get rid of the illegal connections.
I think, I think there's a fine sequence in place.
There is.
We put that on the flyer the last time we sent them out.
Okay.
When you called me Friday night at 7:30, the pump you're changing, was that one you suspect was culpable?
Yeah, I do, I do. That was number 46. It's on Third Street, corner of Third and First. And I talked to a few homeowners there. There was one house that I, there was nobody home or didn't answer the door. And someone is pumping gray water into that one. There's more, more than that pump, but we've got probably six or seven in town that I would for sure like to be inspected this week or next. But I need resources, I guess, or someone with authority that can go in. Maybe the city of Waterloo could borrow you someone or you could...
It was actually, I believe, the building inspector of Waterloo that did the inspection.
Yeah, it was. And, and we did help with that last time, but there, on our side was really no organization. It was all the inspectors of City Waterloo. We had very little follow-up, I think, on that. Normally with a city, Cedar Falls, Waterloo, Waverly, they will try to inspect 20% of their system every year. So every five years, every house would be inspected. I would like to begin that or have someone I can call if I have a culprit that I would, I need to have checked out. Because I was at a house last night, 511 Maple Street. Got a call this morning, the light's back on. Changed both pumps. So there's, there's a huge problem. These can burn up really fast and it's costly to the system, your bank account, and it's also a risk for other people living in these stations.
It's costing the citizens out there.
Yeah.
Plus, when it goes down, you're taking down three other houses.
Yeah, you are. So normally, two houses per pump. If there's two pumps in the station, it's the four surrounding houses around that, that station. If one pump goes down, there is a baffle, the water will go to the other pump, but it wouldn't take long for that one to burn up either if, if you have the sump water coming in there. So I'm understanding of all the groundwater. I think everyone's dealing with it. Washburn is, is definitely an area that's low and has a high water table in their area. So I feel for those people. But we need to get it out on top of the ground, away from the houses. We've had some discussion about the drainage ditch, but that's a completely separate issue from this. So...
What type of fine is there? I was going to say, what's the...
I'm not sure the schedule.
In order to have fine, we have to have an ordinance, so there's got to be something on the books and that. I don't know either.
And we don't know that we have one? Okay.
Either way.
There's, there's fines in our planning zoning ordinance.
Yeah. Actually, we had good luck the last time we did the inspections.
I would, I would say you'll probably get 85, 90% people okay with you coming in looking. There are a lot of fixed income people that live out there, so it's difficult for them to have something fixed or changed. Also, they're on fixed income, so I don't want to see their bill rise because we didn't take care of the sump pump situation. This, the core problem that we have here on our inventory is the sump pumps going into this, this system.
Ray, did you, you were going to talk on this? Did you, do you answer your questions?
Oh, I, I pretty much knew, but keep it right on. I don't, that's what I, one of the reasons I was going to bring up was the extra cost for people putting, I just got some figures that might shock you.
Yeah, no. Yeah, go ahead. I will, I got a few more things I'd like to speak to.
I guess on getting the, the word out, I don't think we can wait till the next water bill goes out because...
Wouldn't be that hard to fire that.
We, we need to address this in the next day or two rather than beyond that.
They've got a meeting.
Because after that, it looks like weather's probably going to change a little bit, but we need to...
Well, the ground will stay wet over there for a week or two at least.
Yeah, that ground will be up for some time out there. Sometimes they pump all winter.
Right.
And it's bound with the river.
Right. And that's, doesn't sound like it's going to go down soon.
And they've got a meeting tomorrow night at the, where'd you say? At the church?
Yeah, at the end of First Street.
On the south side of town there?
So you have a town hall meeting?
Okay.
You have a town hall meeting, sir?
Yeah, the Watersford Community Association.
Well, I think we need to get flyers to you so that you can pass them out and, and I don't know whether you're available to speak to them or not.
What time is the meeting?
Uh, 6:30. We generally don't have a lot of people show up, but when there's problems like this, then they tend to...
May, may be a good time to get the word out about that. I am almost positive I can make it. If I'm not there, please get the word out that we need sump pumps. They have a valve system. Turn it so the valve is going to the outside of the house and not the sump pump or the sewer pump. And, or if they could change that so it's not even capable of doing that, that would be great. If they, if they're hooked directly up to it, I'd like to see it go out, a window, basement window, something like that. And that's not a, it's a temporary thing. We need to get it hooked up correctly going outside of the house. And the best way is to get it farthest away from the house so it's not coming back in. But you're just making ponds in, in the backyard. So I, I do understand, but when we have sump pump water going into the system, it's starting to get costly for the board.
See if we got, we probably have a copy of that frame that last time we sent out.
We do.
On file, we should get a copy.
Is Bob Osgood still work for the city?
Who?
Bob Osgood?
That's Waterloo.
Yeah. Does he still work for them? Do you know?
Yeah, I think he's over there.
Okay. He's, he's the one who headed this last time. And the other thing I would ask with inspections is that we do thorough, 100% and follow up on the ones that we couldn't get into or needed to fix something. Because obviously, those are the, those are the ones causing this. So any questions about this or more discussion? I guess I feel like I have a lot to say and I've already said a lot, but...
I guess the thing we need to think of a couple more ways of getting the word out to folks is I think you'll probably have higher attendance than normal at the meeting tomorrow night, but not, still not reaching everyone.
You're not going to have everyone there.
So I mean, there's, you know, the, the post office has the every-door direct mail options. You could get the voter file and do a robocall to people, I don't know what...
Are they going to answer no robocalls?
Well, you can, you can set it up so they go through voicemail.
Yeah, if, yeah, if we could get the word out, even word of mouth, if you have everyone at the, the meeting, tell every single neighbor that's on their own pump, then you should probably cover at least half the town, you know? I mean...
We, a lot of times, we'll post it on Facebook. We have a lot of residents that follow that.
Yeah, and I am on there. I try to, to not give my opinion too much on things or, or I'm not avoiding conversation, I guess, but things can get misconstrued on there. So I have spoken a little bit to my response on one of the calls I got. But if there are direct questions, the phone's always on. And I don't, I guess I don't see us not being successful in some type of a, an inspection or at least getting the word out to, to help this situation. So like I said, immediate inspections, I'd like to start soon. Like I said, immediate inspections, I'd like to start soon, don't know how quickly we can get done on this, but I do kinda want a number from someone I can call and say, it's, I, I wouldn't call them at 6 o'clock at night, but all 8 o'clock the next morning, I need you to, to go to these four addresses and inspect these within...
Frank's usually available, ain't you?
Yeah, I usually, I usually work through Mr. Geven, so I'd ask Roy, I know he's tied up in his room, but how he can address this through the code enforcement.
That would be, that would be great, and so the, the fines basically would be a last resort, I'd rather see people just fix their...
I think the last time we sent out numerous requests to change it before we find them.
Yeah, I don't know if we had any fines.
Okay, other thing is...
What's the loc, excuse me, what's the location of the meeting tomorrow night?
Um, I don't know the exact address, is it Redeemer, is that the name of it? Redeemer, the church, and First Street.
Yeah, if you're...
It's on the dead end, it's the, on the South.
Second street used to go through, First Street down there, past that church on the south end of town, not really that hard to find, but it is back in their ways, so. I did bring the NPDS permit just for example, but this is our permit to discharge water and there are limits for how much water we can bring in because of how the, the lagoon is, is designed to handle water, and it's a 100 day, 180 day average for wet weather, so the 50,000 gallons per day is what we are able to handle on a, on a six months period. We discharge water every six months and we're getting a, a full lagoon cell out there, so all the rain on top of all the sump pump water coming in is, is crunch time for us to get our water discharged. I probably won't be here later in October because I've been so busy, but just to update for September, we did four locates, five service calls, we had Saint Water sampling for our discharge that just started October 1st, and then we did water sampling for our quarterly influent on the 16th, I'm sorry, the 17th the samples were taken, so we were able to discharge on the 1st of October. We mowed a couple times, I don't remember the dates on those, and we did do the air release valves in town, so when it gets an air pocket in this pressurized system, it's gotta have somewhere to go, so if there's air release valves both in the system and out on the discharge line out in that field, so we got those cleaned up before, it got too wet here, it's not flooded yet, but the discharge hose on Cedar has been underwater for quite a while, so don't foresee us being able to get out to the discharge anytime soon, but if there's not any other questions, I'm gonna take off so I can take care of the folks in town. Oh, go ahead.
Is there money for the 10 pumps?
How much are the 10 pumps, Ben?
Just rough.
I would say a maximum of 16,000.
Okay.
For 10, we're at 1579 I believe for, for 1.
Are you seeking approval today?
I'm seeking approval for the purchase of 10 pumps, we should be able to have those a couple of them right away, a couple more in a week, but of those seven pumps that need to be looked at, I suspect four or five of them will be good, I know one of them's not, so we have a possibility of six. One of them is not because of corrosion on the outside of the pump, the housing gets so worn from rust, we've seen ones where we, we rebuilt them, a month later I go out because the water's actually penetrated through the casting because of corrosion, so if they're too corroded, we try to, try not to use those again and, and have the same issue, but we do reuse as much as we can to save costs, so.
We have about 90,000 in the fund right now, we should be able to cover that.
You have a motion on the floor?
Making motion for purchase of 10.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Any other business to come before us?
Just add a little bit?
Sure.
I got a copy of all the data, like he says, I was, I was gonna bring up a, we gotta do something or we're gonna be replacing all these pumps all the time, but as we know that what happens, but I pump one house, three days ago, I moved 21,000 gallons in a 24 hour period. Yesterday I checked it, I'm at 32,000, that's one house, so, and there's, like I said, I, I didn't see that many lines out, I thought I'd see a lot more, and the, and I got one question about that pump, that same point type of pump that's down at the end of Third Street, is there a reason you can't turn that on, is there a...
Yeah, there's no electricity to it.
It was dis...
There's no electricity to it?
It was decon...
Anybody know electrician?
Electricity was pulled out of that a couple of years ago, the hoses are gone, they were all rot and they went across two, three properties.
Oh, it, there's still a hose there.
Well, there's, it's shot.
Yeah.
And the pump probably needs to be reconditioned, and there used to be about 14,000 in that account out there and there's nothing in it now.
Yeah, well, I know, I know when, when they did use that last time, it did help the residents in that area, and I'm sure...
The other side of town complained that it brought up the level in the ditches and gave them water nervous, so, yeah, one side liked it, the other one didn't, but no, there's no electricity to that anymore, the boxes yet and everything.
That water district, the funds have been used up in it.
Yeah. I know, you know, it's, it's just nature of the beast where we live, it used to be a, the best duck hunting in the world, this old guy told me years, about 30 years ago, he says, out there and now there's a housing addition, so...
See, a lot of the ditches too are filled in on the internal part, backyard or front, and water's used to go to them, they don't anymore.
The, the plan that was proposed or whatever that Kathy and I come up with, what did you come up with on, you told me earlier, the money?
Well, it was anywhere from two to four million dollars and that was positioned different pumps throughout the town.
Right.
And then, you know, even if that, would that work, you know, it'd have to be pumped into those exterior ditches, which some are yelling, brings up their water table in their house, so...
Somehow get it out to the creek, get it to the river, right?
So it was that study coming back, it was money.
Yeah, well, Don made me, me or you hit the lottery and...
People call me about it, you know, I've kinda reminded them that 10 years ago when we looked into this, that the town overwhelmingly rejected it, of the 400 some households, I think 20 or 25 people that they, they were interested in doing it. Well, now, a lot of the people are coming back and saying, well, is this something we could, could have board supervisors revisit and, and look into doing now, because 10 years has been quite a changeover, people moving out there, and some of the people seem to think that there may be enough people to go along with it.
See, they had a special assessment for that.
Right.
Account, and nobody really can remember how that came about, different people were charged, they weren't all the same, and there's about 16,000 in there, but that, it's completely empty now because they cleaned that ditch out.
Right, I think that money was used to pay for the survey of the de-waterization program.
Some of it did, some of it did. And then that pump was pulled out a few years ago, gray, and it was redone, rebuilt and so forth, and it was working, but there, there's nothing there now, I don't even know if pumps are there yet.
Well, it's still there.
Had your head down in there, didn't you?
Well, the road, the water's almost across the road at that point.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I left Washburn that morning, I took the road just to see if there was pump, is there, and it's been years.
That's where all the crowd heads are.
When they did the, the elevation of, of Washburn and they, they went through and measured everything, that's the lowest point in town to dismount where that pump's at.
Yeah, because the guy right across the street, he used to go over there and turn it on all the time.
Uh, is there any way, any tribe for a federal grant or something, I mean, I'm sure all this was looked at.
You know Kathy was looking into that a few years ago, you know, and, and that's about the only way we probably could get some relief out there. Kathy, you wanna talk about that a little bit?
I think before she does, I think you stand a better chance to get a grant if you incorporate it.
Mayor?
Yeah, Mike Osgood.
That's gonna happen.
Ray's all that.
You guys, you guys, you guys do such a great job.
You want local control.
It's, it's, I know, it, that's been visited.
I think we got more renters out there too, Ray, than what we had years ago.
I don't recall all the details, but the study that was done six or seven years ago, and we pretty much shelved it after that, after the residents had heard that there was two to four million dollar price tag. At that time, the consultant, Bolton and Mink from Ames, they did, we did talk briefly about them with finding other sources of, of revenue to help pay for this type of thing, and there was really no, no definitive answers for that. I think we'd have to start that process all over again if, if we dusted off those reports and started looking at the, the studies again.
But you know, with the water problems all around this country, it'd be pretty hard to get grants now.
Ray, possibly.
Thanks Kathy.
Thank you.
Anything else to come before us? Entertainer worship for adjournment.
Second.